Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the March 5th, 2020, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Forsyth County, and we have some public hearings tonight. I'm calling us to order at 5:03 PM. And one of my colleagues recently attained his ordination, so I'd like to ask Commissioner Levitt, would you like to lead us in the invocation and pledge tonight?
Yeah, if you'd like.
Please.
I appreciate you putting me on the spot.
I do it to them. I usually pick on those two.
Please all stand as you're able and bow your heads. God, we thank you for this moment, and we thank you for our quality of life that we all enjoy. We thank you for our public safety and everybody that makes this county a great place to live. We thank you for this Board of Commissioners and their will to be up here with all the love we receive daily and not so much sometimes. We thank you for the health that we all have. We hope the coronavirus doesn't get as bad as media wants to pretend it is, and in God's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Are there any changes to the agenda? Commissioner Levitt picking on you first again. Thank you. Commissioner Cooper.
Madam Chair, I have none.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
No, ma'am, I don't.
And Commissioner Brown?
Madam Chair, I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you have any changes on behalf of the county?
Madam Chair, I do. New Business 3 is on the agenda, but I'd like to change the title of that to the following: Court Ratification of the Employee Handbook Policy Revision Regarding Conditions Involving Pandemic or Influenza. This is Policy 9, Section 15, and then after that, and the renumbering of sections that follow. Sections 16 through 19 is reflected, and backup materials provided.
Alright, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries unanimously, and that item has been amended in the form of changing the description.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Alright, then. Counselor, do you have any changes?
Madam Chair, I do not. I just want to announce for the record, I may be asking you all for a short executive session at the end of this agenda.
And do you anticipate there will be business taking place afterwards?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do not have anything to edit or change. Thank you.
Okay. I do have one myself. I'd like to make a motion to postpone public hearing number six until our April 2nd meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries unanimously, so that item will be heard next month. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
No.
A motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. We do have an announcement this evening and a proclamation. As many of you know, it is census year, and it's very important for everybody to make sure that you're counted. It's vital to many, many things for this county, but I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and if the members of the Census Committee could come forward, I'd like to present this to you as well. So, Anna and everybody. We have a large volunteer network, and these are a few of the larger partners in that effort to try to make sure that Forsyth County has a complete count. As they're coming down, I'll begin reading it. Whereas Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution mandates that a census be conducted on the nation's population every 10 years, with the next census scheduled for April 1st, 2020, and whereas it is vital that all households in Forsyth County, Georgia, complete and submit a census form, and every resident of our community counts and deserves to be counted. Whereas the census will determine how federal government distributes $400 billion in funding, including an estimated $16 billion for critical community services, housing, transportation, healthcare, economic development, as well as other needs and services in Georgia. And whereas census data ensures fair congressional representation by determining how many elected congressional representatives in congressional districts each state will have, and the following - the 2010 census, Georgia gained additional congressional districts, and whereas it is essential that accurate data be collected from groups of people who are historically difficult to count, including young children, low-income individuals, military personnel, non-native English speakers, minorities, and rural residents. And whereas planning outreach, local government involvement, and community education are required to ensure that the census is as accurate as possible, and whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law, and whereas Forsyth County has created a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee that is working with the community partners to provide outreach messaging especially designed to meet the needs of all residents and reach those considered hard to enumerate, and will encourage every resident to accurately complete the census questionnaire online, over the telephone, or promptly return it by mail. Now, therefore, the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 1st, 2020, as Census Day in Forsyth County, and recognizes the importance of the 2020 census and pledges full support to achieving a complete and accurate census count. If you guys want to come forward, we'll present this to you. Here, Anna.
Thank you.
And if y'all want to ask. Can you move just?
Yeah.
Center a little bit. There you go.
Yeah. Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work in this. At this time, Karen Schultz is going to read the rules of the meeting and announce any public comments, speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Like to take a moment to review the meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who would like to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form, which is available just outside this room. Those who wish to speak should not currently be an announced candidate for public office. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to old business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come basis and will be heard in the order which they signed up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Madam Chair, we have no speakers in this first session. If someone would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. I see none.
Thank you. In that case, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the special called meeting of February 18th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the special called meeting of February 19th, 2020?
So moved. Second.
And that also carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of public hearings of February 20th, 2020?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, a second, please vote. Once again, carries unanimously. And is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session and executive session held on February 25th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. That carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adopt the joint training session meeting of February 26th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adopt the joint training session meeting of February 26th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that also carries unanimously. Thank you for that. At this time, Karen is going to read the rules for our public hearing segment. It is very similar to the public speaking. There are a few nuances, though, and Karen will advise us of those.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the public hearing portion of the meeting, each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who wish to speak should complete a public hearing form available just outside this room. Please fill out both sides and submit the form to the clerk when approaching the podium to speak. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will divide among the speakers, and we will provide a reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, can you please give us an introduction to our first public hearing this evening?
Yes, public hearing number one, SP 190012. This is located in Commission District Number 2. It's a public hearing regarding sketch plat approval for Myriad Lands LLC to build a parking lot with 20 parking spaces associated with a 2,388-square-foot contractor's establishment on 5.708 acres of property that's currently zoned M1. The applicant is also requesting a variance to increase the maximum number of parking spaces from 10 to 20. The property is located on Pine Grove Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing is now open. If you're here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
My name is Luigi Hernandez. I'm here in representing Myriad Lands, in case anybody has any question.
Okay, thank you. And are you the applicant? Okay. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. A motion, a second, please vote. We are now closed. Commissioner Brown, this is your district.
Yes. So I want to thank Stacy Guy and all the work with the applicant on this. It's very technical and just a lot of issues going on with this property. Luigi, would you want to tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do there?
Yes, sir. We have a construction company. It's a medium-sized company. We are dedicated to do street escape projects. We work mainly for cities, counties, and the Department of Transportation. We have been working on the Atlanta metropolitan area for the last five years. So basically, what we do is constructing sidewalks, storm drainings, retaining walls, improvement of intersections, widening of roads. What we are planning to do in this particular property is we want to use the existing building as our office, and also, we want to do some grading to do overnight parking lot of our pickup trucks and equipment.
As you can see here by the conditions that are proposed, a lot of thought went into this with the arborist and to actually shade a lot of the parking from the road there, so...
Yeah, we are going to be more than happy to meet those conditions.
So this has been a result of numerous meetings back and forth and input from the public, and again, thanks to Stacy and his work in the community there. So, any questions from other commissioners?
Sam, ready for a motion when you are.
I'd like to move that we approve the sketch plat for Myriad Lands LLC with the variance to the UDC Section 17-2.7, Parcel 088-007, 2615 Pine Grove Road, Coming, Georgia 30041, SP 190012, with the conditions as shown on the screen and the conditions set forth by the Planning and Zoning Office.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, public hearing number two.
AZ 200003, located in Commission District Number 3. This is a public hearing for Alan Wiggins regarding the Amendment of Conditions Number 1, 2, 8, 9, 12, 13, 14, and 15, placed on the original zoning application, which was zoning application 3802.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries unanimously. We are now open. If you are here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
Madam Chair, since he's not an attorney, would you mind explaining that he's allowed to go ahead and explain what he wants at this time, make his presentation?
He's not bringing representatives?
No.
That's fine. Do you have - have you turned in a speaker's form?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so make sure you do if you haven't. Yeah, if you're not represented, you can give your own presentation. That's fine.
Okay. My name is Alan Wiggins. I'm the applicant. I am looking to build a single-family home on 2.82 acres that was previously rezoned in consideration of a potential neighborhood. That transaction is not going to occur. Some zoning conditions were put on the parcel at the time to include connection to sewer, among the other things that you see there. Those are the things that we need removed so we can put a single-family home on the 2.82 acres instead. Here to answer any questions that you might have.
Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Was there anything that you wanted to have displayed as part of your presentation?
Not unless there's questions that would need to be answered.
We'll leave it till afterwards, then. Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to this application? Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
And that public hearing is now closed with unanimous vote. Commissioner Levitt?
Let's see if I got anything.
Okay.
All of these items are just - were put on the subdivision, shouldn't pertain to what he's trying to do as a single-family home, so he's wanting to remove all those items.
He wants - he's going to be on septic.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think he's on the road - you're just off Bentley inside that neighborhood, is that where it is?
So this is right on Bentley Road.
Okay.
There's this small white home there, just past Bentley Road.
I know right where you are, okay.
So it does have Bentley Road frontage. The home will be approximately 200 to 250 feet off Bentley Road.
And what size is your home?
The home will be roughly 3,000 to 3,400 square feet. We've not finalized that just yet, but you'll have a picture of the proposed home here of what we're trying to build.
Excellent.
If you'd like to see that, very much.
If you want, they can put it up where everybody can see it. He just wanted to remove the conditions and be done with it. Okay, he went to staff, and staff said, "This is your best road," so I know. If you show the bottom of the last page, then back to the first page again, please. Okay. And go back to the first page, please. Ready for motion, Madam Chair?
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. Make a motion, slide it down just a little bit because you're cutting my top off. There you go. Make a motion to approve the amendment of the zoning conditions on ZA 3802 for Mr. Alan S. Wiggins, Parcel 013-437 at 6330 Bentley Road for AZ 200003 with the as shown conditions and changes.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Brown, public hearing number three.
CP 200002 in Commission District Number 3. The public hearings for a county initiated request for a conditional use permit to build a 12,000-square-foot office warehouse facility with an open storage yard on 3.271 acres of property currently zoned M1. The property is located on Commerce Boulevard. The conditions are shown on the screen.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote. That motion carries unanimously, and we're now open. Good evening, Mr. Courtney.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Sean Courtney. This is county-initiated zoning for a cup for West Chatham Warning Devices. It is a law enforcement emergency personnel outfitter, so that they put sirens and other equipment on these law enforcement and emergency vehicles.
Oh.
Looks like the PowerPoint.
There we go.
Okay. This is - it's located on Commerce Boulevard in an industrial park called Highland Ridge. This is the site plan. As you can see, there's a large buffer with wetlands area along most of the property, and the hash marks show where the open storage area will be, and the open storage is just for vehicles, so there'll be typically new vehicles to be upfit with emergency equipment. And these are the conditions to limit just to public safety vehicles for the open storage, and that they only can be where delineated, those hash marks on the site plan, that the building be three-sided brick, and that any landscaping comply with the covenants and as amended. And the design guidelines for this industrial park will require them to submit a landscape plan and get that approved. I'm here with Patrick Paget with West Chatham Warning Devices. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Levitt, Commissioner Levitt, this is in your district as well.
Yes, if you'll pull up the sketch plat, please. Sean, I just want to make sure that everybody sees, because sketch plats have details on there, that's why we don't put them in the conditions. So it looks like you've got a fence showing, is that correct? Is that a fence on the sketch plat?
Yes.
And it's denoted on the sketch plat? Okay. So he's got everything denoted, you can see all the notes on the sketch plat, it gives everything, so we didn't put it on all in the form of conditions. Any other questions?
Is there any time limit as to how long the vehicles will be parked as storage vehicles in the storage area?
For open storage, it's required because it's over 96 hours. Sometime - it depends on...
How long it takes to get it?
Right, right. It could be where they get a bunch all at once. They, you know, they do the work inside the building, but they may get where they get a shipment delivered, and they got a bunch of work going, and so they have to sit there, so it just depends.
But once they finish the work on the vehicle, then the vehicle leaves the site?
Right.
Okay. So it's not going to be there, like, for any extended amount?
No, it'll, you know, be the sheriff's department get it outfitted and get it back.
And they want to get them on the road as quick as they can.
They're not doing any type of maintenance or regular service on these vehicles or anything that expands beyond the upfitting of the specialized equipment, not doing any type of bodywork or any of those types of repairs?
I believe very small repairs.
Just limited to that type of equipment?
And keep in mind, this is in an industrial park.
I got you.
High rates of HOA-type of covenants or POA. It's on the cul-de-sac, and you can see the creek wrapped around the back and the side. It's got pretty good buffers on it.
Do you have - did you have any condition? I don't see any on here, but is there any - are there any conditions in the existing zoning that require that that work be conducted inside the building?
They're going to, they can't work out in the weather with all those electrical wires out.
The repairs would just be to the lights and the sirens.
Yep.
So it's not going to morph into a general repair facility?
And the benefit to us having it here is they don't have to send two deputies down all the way to Myriad to drop off a car, and all that wasted time that we have a man-hours and wear and tear on our vehicles, this will be in our county.
Do any other commissioners have questions? We're ready for a motion, Commissioner Levitt.
Alright, thank you. I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the office warehouse facility with open storage yard on the property currently zoned M1, Parcel 018-126 at 5745 Commerce Boulevard, Alpharetta, and CP 200002 with the conditions in the sketch plat shown.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
It was already shown.
Oh, wait. Yep.
It was already up there, we saw it. Thank you.
Alright. That does carry unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, number four.
SP 190014, Commission District Number 4. Public hearing regarding sketch plat approval for Anthony Shannon to combine two lots to build one residential lot on 2.086 acres of property with a density of 0.48 units per acre of property. It's currently zoned LR. The property is located on Martin Terrace.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, please vote. Our public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Christopher Lyte, Lutzen Johnson here on behalf of Mr. and Ms. Shannon, who are here tonight, should we have any questions? This property is out at the lake.
Madam Chair, just to point of order very quickly, we've received some comments back from folks in the gallery, they're not able to hear, so just make sure Board members, if you would, speak clearly into your microphones if you could.
Thank you. Everybody, make sure your mics are on. You can continue.
Okay, thank you. Love to continue. Oh, there we go. We're out here at the lake off Waldrup Road, a road that probably lightly used that we don't know much about, Martin Terrace. Mr. and Ms. Shannon bought a narrow piece of property in the shaded yellow area. I'll explain why that's shaded in just a second. I'm going to go to the next picture and come back to this one. You can see the south property there, the narrow property, and they went to start building a house and realized they were going to have some trouble with their septic system, installing an adequate system that was going to be environmentally friendly, and one that was - didn't require a ton of maintenance and upkeep. So they decided, "Well, there's an empty lot across the street from us, let's buy that and see if we can put our septic system over there. It'll preserve that as natural green for the area anyway," and realized that - oh, no, I can't go back. There we go. The yellow area was platted, was subdivided from a mother parcel in one plat, and then the blue areas, the property that's purchasing, was platted as a subdivision from a separate mother parcel. So technically, they were separate subdivisions, which cannot be combined without a sketch plat. So we're here tonight to combine those two parcels for the sole purpose of putting a septic system on a property that will be associated with one house. So essentially, it'll be one house on the one property, and it's zoned LR, so there couldn't be another structure there as long as it's one lot. It'd have to be re-subdivided. So with that, I'll reserve the rest of my time and take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Our public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Mills, this is in your district.
Yes, I don't have any questions. It's just a matter of trying to work this out to be able to build a house and put a septic tank. I'd like to make a motion, if there's no questions, to approve sketch plat approval for Anthony L. Shannon, Parcels 317022, 317049, 9215 Martin Terrace, Gainesville 30506, that's SP 190014 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I do have one question just for clarification. Mr. Kennard, you validated that there's not any issues with this crossing over - it's a private road, not a public road?
Actually, I've got some recommended conditions. I didn't realize this was in Sidney's district, so I emailed it to you, Commissioner Johnson, but I'll bring it up.
And he's not seen them then, because I met with him.
He's not seen them, though. But it's these two here.
Surprise, Christopher. Shock.
If you'll just put them up there and let him see them.
Ken?
Counselor, it would have been nice if you had helped him do those conditions, if you'd sent them to me.
Well, I thought they were otherwise going to get to you, so I apologize for that.
It was my fault.
So the conditions pertain only to the fact that there's going to be septic drain lines going under a county prescriptive right-of-way. So the two conditions would be that any placement of the infrastructure just needs to be coordinated with engineering, and that they will enter into an indemnification maintenance agreement just to protect us in case... agreement just to protect us in case that their installation effects are right-of-way. That's not a terribly big deal, I'm sure it won't be a problem. And that they will, in the future, agree to dedicate the requisite amount of right-of-way to make it a formal sort of platted county road, should we request.
Thank you.
I just have a, if I may, how can they dedicate it if it's a combined lot from the sketch plat?
In the future, they can dedicate it. And I ran this by Tom, he said if it occurs, if the dedication occurs in the future, it'll just be non-conforming.
So it'd still be a single tax parcel with right-of-way in between?
Correct.
Correct.
Right.
I guess we have to withdraw.
If you'd like to withdraw your second and you want to amend your motion?
Yes. Oh, yeah, and we've got to clear the board.
Are we, yeah, are we good with those conditions, Mr. Light?
Or we can postpone until you have time to think about it.
Functionally, I don't think it would change anything they're trying to do. It's just to provide future access if needed.
Yeah, no, I understand. So, and it's only if needed, so, and that's assuming that road's expanded.
It would, it would be only if in the future the other property owners along the road dedicate right-of-way. And then the right-of-way from this parcel is also needed to pave and improve this county public road.
Understood. I think, yes.
That's reasonable.
And they were going to maintain it and do so that's, an indemnification shouldn't be an issue.
That's reasonable.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve SP 190014 sketch plat approval for Anthony L. Shannon, parcels 317022, 317049, 9215 Martin Terrace as presented with the conditions on the screen.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Thanks for everybody's patience on that one. Public hearing number five, Mr. Brown.
SP 190007 in Commission District Number Five. This is a public hearing regarding sketch plat approval for 6090 Shady Grove LLC.
Are you still, are people still having difficulty hearing?
Yeah, we have him here, he's at all.
Play your microphone close, Tom, you're soft.
Can we have our communications folks check out, check on the speakers? Everything's functioning?
Everything is, we're good, we're getting loud over here and soft over there, we wouldn't have speeches.
Tom, are you a low talker? There you go, wow, I had you in stereo that time.
All right, SP 190007 in Commission District Number Five. It's a public hearing regarding sketch plat approval for 6090 Shady Grove LLC to build 60 residential lots on 50.124 acres, excuse me, 57.124 acres with a density of 1.05 units per acre on property currently zoned LR. The property is located east and west of Shady Grove Road, approximately 140 feet south of the intersection with Cagle Drive.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion a second, please vote. Public hearing is now open. If you're here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Thank you very much for your time. Can we reject the presentation, please? Well, basically, we are a, we are a small Central American developer that are interested to invest here in a residential, in a small residential project in Shady Grove Road. We have been working here since two years ago with a great professional local team that includes a firm like Nelson Architects here from Alpharetta, Harrison Construction from Brookhaven, and us from Central America also. And of course, planners and engineer, which actually is our engineering firm, supporting all the technical design behind the project. What we want to build is just to create a unique new residential development here in Forsyth County that could take advantage of all your atmosphere, your nature, and your atmosphere here in the north side of Atlanta City, for sure. Basically, our vision is based on four different pillars that include the homes, the meaning in terms of how the community is going to be integrated, the integration of the community, and the lifestyle, especially regarding the wellness of the families that is going to be living there. The master plan is basically 60 lots of 25,000 square feet. It's a low-density project, basically 0.95 lots per acre on their lake residential zoning. And basically, the concept is based on how are we going to integrate outdoor living space with the homes over there. I want to introduce Kenneth, which actually is our engineer, to explain more technical details of the, of the sumit.
Thank you. And real quick, can you just state your name for the record because we didn't get it at the beginning?
Sure, excuse me, my name is Rodrigo Mata, I'm from Costa Rica.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Wood, 350 Research Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. I think leaving it on that plan is good. So I get to work on a lot of different plans kind of over the southeast, but I only get to work on a few of them that are really cool and that kind of the focus of them is is to ask us to do it in a pure pedestrian walkable fashion. So when you look at the plan, the way we laid this out is the buildings will be engaging the road when you're looking at them, the driveway is coming from the back internal. All of the cul-de-sacs, instead of being your typical cul-de-sacs, we're having them wider where we can get the green into the middle. As you enter into the development, it will be gated on each side with the divided median so we can landscape the entire frontage. When you get there, it has a wellness center directly straight ahead. And that would be a wellness center that would have yoga, a lot of different classes and different things that would be part of the wellness as well as part of the walkability and the outdoor lifestyle. And then if you look in the center of it, from, from the amenity, basically those homes are turned inward. There is some different projects that you've seen where the homes are turned inward and so they would all face that common green area with a common boardwalk, sidewalk that would run all the way down and then to that central green and then back out. And so really turning it inward so that we focus on the green infrastructure, and now we have it. From a stormwater management perspective, we are up against Lake Lanier with multiple dock permits. And so we're looking at a lot of the green infrastructure for water quality as well as a different type of bio areas for this so that we do not have any harm going over to any of the neighbors for the way we're doing this. And the lot sizes and the way we're doing our homes, it'll make it pretty easy to be able to do this from here. From a transportation perspective, we set it basically the entrance on one of the straightest, you know, points from there, so we have the maximum sight distance looking back left as well as right. And then both of those intersections are, both, both sides have a D cell lane coming into it for traffic mitigation as you're coming in. And on the eastern side, when you're coming in there, that again has the gates for that side, and then it would cross over to that creek and form a private cul-de-sac that would be back along the creek from there. And like I said, when we're, when you're looking through the basis of the design as you drive around the outside of the perimeter, is there's parts in the bottom where it has a creek. And then it has a, basically, everything, we tried to have those terminating vistas. So if you're driving down or you're walking down one of the boardwalks or one of the roadways, you would end at a feature and something that can be used. And then it has walking trails incorporated around, along that south edge that would go from the docks along the creek and then back up so that you can get a lot of walkability. You can also get a lot of different things along the way. They've talked a lot of programming about what would be along there. But it's really kind of a, an outdoor lifestyle community. And with Harrison, I've worked with them in Brookhaven and many places, and they build really high-end quality homes. And with that, I'll reserve any time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this project, or this application, rather? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Come forward. And please remember, if you haven't filled out a form yet, you're going to need to turn one in. Yep, that's the form.
My name is Joyce Hoagie and I live in the neighborhood of Shady Grove and Lanier Drive. And the neighborhood has some concerns. We would like to have some conversation with the developer before this goes forward to an approval. One of them, a very important one, is that we'll definitely need to have a stoplight at Shady Grove in Chattahoochee. We, there's 60 homes, you can easily say 120 cars, one trip a day. I mean, I'm sorry, 160 homes, well, 120, there's two cars to a home. So narrow roads, some bad curves on Chattahoochee, on Shady Grove, we're going to have to have a stoplight there. That's going to be a concern. And who is responsible for the road improvements that are going to be required to handle this many more cars? This is a little country road. And I haven't heard anything about that. And I, he answered one question, it's a gated community. And this is not your concern, but I would like the developers to give some answers to the neighborhood. I understand there's going to be 14 plus or minus boat slips. When and why and how was this approved? The Corps hasn't even approved one boat dock in the last year. And they're putting 14 in there. And this is a little community back there. These are small little homes, settled in, 14 boat slips. I question that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thanks, I don't get a chance to address you guys very often, I do want to thank you for what you do for us. I've been a resident here of the county for 25 years.
Can you give your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's John, last name is Waco. I live on Turner's Cove Road, off of Shady Grove, just past where the proposed development's going to take place. Been there 25 years and like the previous commenter, got a big concern about the density. She mentioned a couple hundred cars, easy, right? So I would point out to you, in the last couple of years of living off Shady Grove, not once, not twice, but three times, I have sat in my car for hours because of an accident that's taken place on the little country road, as she mentioned, and the road is shut down, right? But I've called my wife for my cellphone saying, hey, there's a helicopter flying above the pasture, what's going on? There's a wreck, there's something. The road gets shut down quite often. We don't need several hundred more cars coming in and out of there, creating another kind of traffic, right? I understand what they're trying to do, but we don't need to turn Shady Grove into another pilgrim mill. And quite honestly, that's what they're proposing. Thanks.
Okay, I'm Edward Wade. How you doing, guys? And I second his thanks for doing what you do because it's a thankless position. I appreciate it. All right, I'll get closer. I was actually pleasantly surprised with the, what they're showing us on the sketch, the houses facing Shady Grove, which is really my main opposition and what you see throughout the county in a lot of places, is just lazy development where you're not really beautifying anything, you know, outside of the development itself. And this is a great thing. But are there any guarantees that you guys are going to be developing the houses as well? You're going to be building the houses also? Because that, you know, handing that development off to somebody else that doesn't have the same vision and they just throw a berm up and put a few pine trees is kind of bad. We, we should ask for more in our development to the county when we're kind of the belle of the ball at this point. Now's the time to kind of strike to raise our standards. There's going to be a lot of development east of 400, north of 369. And it, you know, now's the time for us to, to sort of set new standards and ask for more from developers. It'll pay off, the house values will go up and they will remain up. And that tax base will raise as well. But in this particular case, I mean, if, if they've given the assurance that they're going to be building the homes and can stick with the plan, I mean, there are concerns with the road and Chattahoochee intersection, you know, it's a couple times a month, at least. But, you know, wish for the best, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Schmidt and I live on Fields Drive in Cumming, Georgia. And my concern is the excessive number of homes, which in essence mirrors what has already been said in regards to the increased traffic and the fact that it is a peninsula of basically one road in, one road out. And if there's any problem on the road, we have serious issues. And that is my concern, and I'm not sure it's being addressed correctly. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Walbrun. And I like the idea of new homes on that road and the whole community. I think it's going to be a great idea. I think the quantity, having that many in such an unusual location with like a peninsula road, like what he said. I mean, we get stranded and nobody, majority of homes in this community, you have, you can go left or you can go right and you can get out. Or you can go this road or that road. We literally have one road out. And when there's a fire truck blocking it, because there was an accident which happened about two months ago, and then prior to that, it happened again, you are literally stuck. You can't go to your dentist, you can't go to your doctor appointments, you can't go to school. My daughter, I had to walk with an umbrella. To my parents that were on the other side, there was a fire off of, actually Fields Drive, and this happened like, I think in February. And I had to walk my daughter to the other side of the fire truck in order to get her to school. But this is just what happens when you're on a peninsula. You have one option. So to have 60 homes with an increase, and everyone's saying 120 cars, we're just estimating two cars per home would increase 120 cars. Everybody comes and goes multiple times in a day, has, just the chances of things happening are increased. But the other concern I have is where the location of the entrance, and when we had a meeting prior to this, we, they mentioned that there was going to be an entrance kind of, when you first come down, let's see, when you're going down Shady Grove and the 40 homes or whatever, the majority of the homes are on the right. It's that entrance, as you're coming around that corner, the very first sign, when you come down Shady Grove, if you stop to take a picture of it, you're going to get hit behind because the road is, you're going 40 some miles an hour, and not everybody goes 40, most people go 50. Well, you don't have, if they're pulling out from that corner, there's not going to be enough time for somebody to quickly make a quick decision. You're going to get hit. There's going to be multiple, many more accidents happening right there. If, if they're going to have a road going on to Shady Grove there, their intersection, it, it needs to be moved more to the center or more down the road where it's a long stretch. But right there, I'm telling you, accidents, major accidents, because you can't even take a picture of the sign. So I just wanted to make sure, make sure I really make that clear because that's going to be a major problem. Many deaths will happen there. I just want you to know that. But I, I'm not against the homes, I think it's a great idea, I think a community is great. I just think the amount is way too many for that, a peninsula road. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Rich Wilks. I live on Lanier Drive, which is at the very end of Shady Grove Road. Off of, off of Shady Grove Road. I've lived there for 32 years, okay? Like others, my primary concern is the traffic, okay? Between this proposed subdivision and the end of Shady Grove, I'm guessing there's several hundred houses. And as people have mentioned, the only road you can get out on is Shady Grove. And it's a 45-mile speed limit. The first intersection is Chattahoochee. And you may be well aware, but a lot of people that are coming home from, coming up 400 and say going to Gainesville will shortcut by taking Chattahoochee over, over to Shady Grove to avoid Hammond's Crossing, you might say, that intersection. Right now, there are not so many that take that because of all the construction on pilgrim mill. But there are a lot of people that do that and as others... But there are a lot of people that do that, and as others have mentioned, there have been a number of accidents at that intersection of Chattahoochee and Shady Grove Road. As somebody mentioned, the speed limit's 45 miles an hour. The road's able to handle that. But in looking at this diagram, and I guess this is a question for you folks, I see where they've proposed two different, at each end, two what they call speed tables.
Sir, you have to speak into the mic, please.
Okay, sure. I'm guessing a speed table is to me like a speed hump, maybe not as big as a speed pump. But usually, when you put in something like a speed hump, you're going to reduce the speed on that road to, say, 25 miles an hour. So, I'm just wondering if they've worked with planning on that, or what the story is on those speed tables and what the intention is. Like I say, there's, say, my guess, on the order of 400 houses that are between that subdivision, proposed subdivision, and the end of Shady Grove Road. So, all those people, that's just going to increase the congestion. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'm not sure what the, what remaining time there was for the other side, for the, the clerk will have that number. Did you want to use the remainder of your time? I believe you guys reserved that.
So, we had a lot in some of the community meetings, that was the primary thing that we heard, was traffic. The first thing that was mentioned was about Shady Grove at Chattahoochee with the traffic signal up from our development. We have not, we have not done a, like, an intersection, a warrant analysis for that. We did not believe with the amount of homes that it'd warrant, the traffic signal that we'd look at there. But the concerns, what we were looking at on our site plan, were the same concerns that they were. And what was brought up was the number of accidents, the speed on the road, the speed limit being 45, with it being a, you know, kind of a little bit of a narrower road, and then also about some of the different areas where you enter into the site. And so, in looking at all those items that were brought up, we actually did, on an earlier site plan, we had the entrance moved further up the road, and then on the most recent revision, the entrance was pulled down to go further down into the straightaway. Now, as we get into, you know, we've looked at the site distance, but for some reason, if we're working with transportation, if it becomes a problem, we have the ability to shift down even further. But we did shift it. There was probably an old site plan that was seen between the time we had it and that shift. It does seem like 45 for that type of road is probably a little bit high. I don't know if we can discuss about maybe having the speed limits lowered. One of the things that was brought up in the community meeting, and we had shown it as an idea, it's not been fully vetted out, but we talked about the long speed tables, not the ones that necessarily are abrupt, you know, but the ones that if you're going 60, will launch you a little and make you not do it again. But, you know, we haven't vetted those out, but we're, we want to do the right thing. You know, we showed the D cell lanes. The thing that they love about the peninsula is the exact same thing that we do, too, about the intrigue and being able to come down there and then have the docks. And so, the traffic is important to us, and we'll work with transportation to make sure we can mitigate that for anything that we can do on our side. The dock permits are already existing. They go with the property. Now, whether or not we use all 14 of them, it just sounds like a lot, you know, a decent amount of them, but there's literally 13 or 14 on one side, and then one on the right side, on the smaller side of the side. But those go with the property, and so those were approved back in several years ago. The density is almost just at 1. It's 1.05, I believe, on the final. And so, we are on the lower end of the scale, that I think the max is like 1.8 or 1.79 for the development. So, we do feel like we're, you know, we're trying to bring in a very unique, different, walkable development that has really high-end homes. And kind of the last thing that was brought up that I'll speak to, if we can, am I able to do this myself? Oh, sweet. I think I can do it. And so, this is the Wellness Center that you would drive in and be able to see, and has all the activities with the pool, the clubhouse, the fire pit, and what's going on. And then trying to see some of the different things with the homes. And so, we wanted to kind of get you guys a feel for the, you know, the type of homes, the type of construction, to show you that it would be, you know, a higher level of finishes inside and out, because the price points are going to be higher for this area. And so, that's really what we're pushing, is the quality, and that's why Rodrigo brought the builder actually with him tonight, if you guys have any questions for them. But that is the intention, is to build, you know, this site plan and with this type of, different type of construction, so that we can really get in that form where you have a mixture of materials, mixture of different type of materials on the inside and out, and really make it that walkable community that we show in our site plan. And I think there might be a couple of other, I can't remember how many there were in that slide, but we do have some handouts from the builder, if you guys want to see any of those further. Thank you.
Anything further? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion, a second? Please vote. Our public hearing's now closed. This is in my district. We've been, I've been in communication with this applicant for probably about two years, I think. One of the important considerations, this is a sketch plat process, and I don't, I think a lot of people don't understand the difference between that and the zoning. And this property was actually zoned a very, very long time ago. Lake Res is a category that we don't even have available to apply for now. And when the original zoning was done, it actually would have afforded them up to 97 lots on this property. So, as far as the density goes, this is considered one of the lower-density types of projects that we've actually seen come across our desk for some time. I did want to have Mr. Knard comment on some of the concerns with respect to the road. I know that everything that is done, all the improvements that are going to be required are going to be subject to engineering approval. One of the things that also wasn't captured in the earlier discussion was this idea that there would be a pedestrian road crossing, either via tunnel or however that shakes out, whether they'll do it as above-ground or underground at the other end. But I just want you to kind of address some of the road issues and how those would be handled, and see if we can kind of sort out some of the questions that they had with respect to traffic, sightlines, speed, those kinds of things, and the potential to use a speed table in that area.
Okay. As far as the road improvements and the entrance requirements, they're all subject to our ordinance 101 and the G dot design manual, as far as providing site distance certification for those entrances and any required warning signs. For this roadway, Shady Grove Road, per our policy and design requirements, speed tables or speed humps would not be permitted.
Okay.
So, they'll not be allowed on Shady Grove Road.
Are there other traffic calming things, rumble strips, other types of things that could be used to kind of get people's attention? And if they did do a pedestrian crossing at some point, would we have the ability to employ the flashing lights like we've done over on Trammell?
We would be able to implement some design requirements for a pedestrian crossing, such as rapid flashing beacons and appropriate warning signage, lighting for the development. Those things would all be considered during the design phase and to ensure that there would be safe pedestrian access for the residents.
Thank you. If you could, earlier, when we were looking at your, the fuller presentation, you did have some renderings that had been done by the architect that, over in Birmingham, that had done.
I have it in another one.
Okay, yeah. Can you, can you hand those to our clerk and allow those to be displayed, please? Thank you. a little bit on the difference between a sketch plat requirement versus a zoning and...
Sure. So, as you said before, the property was rezoned years ago, most likely even decades ago. I haven't researched that myself, but most of the property around the lake, in particular in that district, it would have been at least 15 years ago, and maybe closer to 40, that it was rezoned. The rezoning process is your opportunity to look at a full list of standards and considerations. For a sketch plat, a property that's already gone through the rezoning process, the Board of Commissioners has a narrower scope, a shorter list of standards to consider when making their decision. You're primarily looking at compliance with existing county codes, which are done through the staff review prior to it getting on your agenda. So, at the point it lands on your agenda, the staff have already reviewed it, verified it complies with county codes. The sketch plat process additionally is an opportunity to engage in public input and determine for issues that there are different opinions, is there any common ground that could be sorted out prior to approval of the sketch plat? But in summary, it's a much shorter list of standards to consider than a rezoning.
Thank you. Was that enough tap dancing? Do you have it ready to go?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
John, I've gotten several complaints through the years about Chattahoochee coming into Shady Grove, and Larry Watson got in touch with me that lives right there, and he says he just sees wrecks all the time. Can we study that intersection? Have y'all ever studied it to see if there's anything we could do to improve it?
The intersection has been improved in the past, and there've been at least two to three studies done that I'm aware of over the years. And so, you know, additional warning signs have been placed. We continue to monitor the location, and if at some point additional improvements are warranted, then we would certainly move forward with those.
Could you look and see when's the last time we have studied it?
Sure can.
Because if there's been a lot more people, residents, that have moved in, and well, this coming in, too. I think it's how you come over the hill at Chattahoochee and you're pointed...
Comes in at that angle, too.
Yeah, down, and then it's just, it's hard to see.
We'll certainly take a look at it again.
Thank you.
So, you have selected your builder for this project, and this was originally done by the firm in Birmingham, and this is a product that they would still, this firm would build, what's on display? Because we talked earlier about... I am.
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Yes, Ms. Manzon, this is our comment. And of course, we are currently trying to balance the product we have, we had from the architect, from Birmingham, through the market requirements. That's the task that we are facing right now, trying to balance and make it happen at the end, because it is a hard word to make it real, you know what I mean? But that's basically what we are working on right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown, I just want to clarify, just to make sure that when you do a sketch plat review, you're, one of the ordinances that you are checking that against is going to be their compliance with the tree ordinance? Is that correct? Or would that not necessarily apply for Lake Res?
It will apply to Lake Res. It will be enforced at the LDP stage at the land disturbance permit.
Okay, thank you.
So, at sketch plat its initial review.
Okay, I didn't, I just want to make sure I don't need to condition that.
One more comment. To the gentleman in the back that raised the comments that were very valid about quality development, that's one reason. I get sort of excited when I see something like this brought in, because you're correct, we don't get a lot of this. I mean, we don't get to see a lot of this. Most of the time, we see the same old, same old. But we have, in the last few years, for those that aren't aware, we updated our comp plan. We had tremendous amount of input from the community. From that, we were asked to do, to raise design standards. Those were voted in last year, you know, on residential. So, there's, and it went back to some of the ones in the north that didn't have good conditions, to try to help elevate, because we had a lot of bad to contend with. We're in the process right now, Commissioner Cooper and I have been having meetings about updating the tree ordinance and trying to elevate it. We're also doing masquerading, and there's other comp plan changes coming forth that was a direct result of the citizens. So, while you're right on lots of things, there are a lot of things occurring to improve it. So, hopefully, we'll be able to see that.
Are there any other questions from the board? And do we have that site plan handy again that we can throw up there? I'm ready to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve sketch plat on parcel 258-032, application SP 190007, approved with the conditions that the site, that the development is in substantial conformity with the site plan and home elevations as displayed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Public hearing number six was postponed until April the 2nd, earlier this evening. Mr. Brown, public hearing number seven. Actually, I'll wait till the room's cleared, so we can all hear better. Yeah, I'm not sure why we're having trouble.
Very good hearing.
I know, I don't doubt that. I think we've had complaints from multiple places in the room. I'm not sure what the issue is tonight.
I know.
Don't you even say that. That's, I'll make room. I'll make room. It's fun up here. You can sit right up here and take part in the action. All right, thank you. Mr. Brown, you can go ahead and present public hearing number seven, please.
Public hearing number seven, zoning application 3970, located in Commission District Number Five. This is a public hearing for a county-initiated request to rezone 2.26 acres from R2R and NS to Res 2. The property's located on Hope Road. The property also has frontage on Pilgrim Mill Road, southwest of the intersection with Lakeside Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anybody who's here to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward at this time. This is your chance to explain what it is you're liking, you're wanting to do.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jacqueline Goldson. I am the owner of both of those areas, and these are particular areas that have been zoned back in, I don't know when, just a very long time ago. They were thrown out as an NS-type neighborhood situation, neighborhood shopping situation. So, we're just wanting to alleviate that and allow it to be residential only, so that, to be honest, we don't end up with a boat dock storage in our backyard. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who's here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion, a second? Please vote. Public hearing's now closed. I was first reached out, this is in my district, Mr. Goldson reached out to me. They have a couple of parcels that are adjacent to each other and are envisioning a future family compound, but in any event, if they decided to divest of the property that does front Pilgrim Mill, I think they wanted to have some assurances that that would be... front Pilgrim Mill, I think they wanted to have some assurances that it would be, it would be in harmony with the way that they're living now, and the way that that particular area has developed over time is certainly not a commercial area. It is all residential. So I agreed to bring this application forward on their behalf. Are there any questions from the board? In that case, I'm ready to make my motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve ZA 3970 as presented. We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Public hearing number eight.
Public hearing number eight. This is a second hearing for changes to the Unified Development Code. The changes would allow two principal dwellings on a lot for the R1R zoning district if the lot is five acres or greater in size. You see that change, the heart of the change right here on the screen. It both cleans up some existing language about building versus dwelling, but the real core of it is that final sentence, very similar to what I just described, "Subject to the application and receipt of a conditional use permit. A maximum of two principal dwellings on a lot may be permitted for the R1R district for lots five acres and greater in size." So it would require a conditional use permit. The first public hearing was held before the Planning Commission in February. They supported the change but did not have any recommended changes, and following tonight's hearing, you could adopt these changes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Second. A motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're now open. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of these changes? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Please vote. And that result is unanimous. We are now closed. Is there any discussion for the discussion of this item, or just, do any of the Commissioners have questions for staff? I'm guessing not. Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I make a motion we approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for approval. Please vote. That motion carries unanimously. Public hearing number nine.
This is also a public hearing for a change to the Unified Development Code, and this one is the second public hearing, similar to the first. This would apply the residential design standards, which were adopted back in 2019, to single-family detached dwellings in the Res 6 zoning district. The current moratorium on Res 6 land disturbance permits would end if this work is adopted. The text identifies that this standard would apply to both new subdivisions and future phases of existing subdivisions. It requires the lot standards, but not the subdivision standards. And I think if you remember from our discussions last year, the lot standards are the ones that apply to the actual home. Subdivision standards are the things with grading and walls. Based on the zoning district, it was my recommendation that the lot standards would be the appropriate standard to apply in this example in the zoning district, not the subdivision standards. That is how it's drafted. The first hearing was held before the Planning Commission last month. They did not have any recommended changes. It's before you tonight for the second hearing. Following tonight's hearing, you could adopt this work.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. And our public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who's here to speak in favor of these changes?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. I speak only for myself, and this is what I believe. I speak in favor. I've heard this issue brought up, I think, about three times. I did not hear any opposition. I speak in favor. Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of these changes? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing on this issue is now closed. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
Madam Chair, I just want to provide a very quick note to state that we've had a moratorium with respect to this issue, and if the board does take action to approve this evening, that moratorium will expire by operation of law. I know there has been some other discussion by perhaps some other board members about perhaps we need to review the design standards maybe applicable to Res 6 multifamily products as well, and if you want to look at that, and if you want to add something like that maybe to Tuesday's work session, this might be the time to do it. Madam Chair.
Thank you for that.
I have a question based on what he just said.
Sure.
Design standards on multifamily, I could absolutely see it are freestanding garden ones, but the ones that are going to be built within a massive MPD, they've got their architect designers that want everything to match. Do we know how many we, we don't have any freestanding garden. We pulled it out of the UDC, they can't even build them, or even if they were zoned, they can't build those anymore.
Can't build what?
Freestanding garden apartments. We changed our UDC where they can't be built anymore unless they're in a MPD.
But there are still opportunities in the UDC to build a Res 6 multifamily product, even if they're not garden apartments.
Multifamily or, as in apartments?
Well, apartment is simply a mode of access to the use. It could be, it could be a condo, it could be a town, whatever the ownership model is, it's a multifamily attached product.
I got you. Thank you.
And that's a completely different animal.
That's more of a ownership residential than it is a commercial residential. Thank you.
Tom and Ken and I talked about this today in a meeting we had earlier, and, I mean, I've been hearing rumblings of different apartments going to come in or try to come in. I met this week with a developer that is looking at, in, I think, some in Commissional Events District and some in yours, and I've had meeting with some proposing in mine, and I, even the developer yesterday made the comment that we needed some kind of, he would just think we would need some kind of standards in place.
Yes, I'm glad.
I mean, I don't want us, my fear is, you don't want to, because people want apartments so badly, they're willing to give a lot. You know, they're willing to raise the bar to get approval. So I don't want to put, I don't want us to come in and adopt something that we can't add to, you know, or that we can't make better. But at the same time, there's a balance. It needs to be created that there is a minimum, I mean, Tom did a, and we could get into this at the work session, but he did, what was it? There's 15 old Res 6 out there?
Projects that have significant size, 10 acres or more, between Res 6 and R3, which is his predecessor. There was about 15 of them in the county.
And most are in my district, of course.
So you, are you suggesting that we postpone this and discuss it in the work session?
No, I think, let's just, I make a motion that we add this to the work session on Tuesday for discussion.
And Commissioner Mills, would it be for the agenda header or for the clerk? The item to be added to the work session would be board consideration of a possible moratorium on acceptance of LDPs for multifamily Res 6 products.
Some move.
We have a motion, a second, for the motion stated by council. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. So we'll hear this again on Tuesday.
Well...
Well, we'll hear the other one. You want, you want to act on this tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you wanted to kick both out.
No, Tom, you think we're ready to vote on this, don't you? So we can end that?
Yes, I see these as two separate issues.
Yeah, the multifamily building, the multifamily under one roof, it's a completely different animal, and it's going to require a little bit different approach, I think. It's gonna, because we're not talking about the same roof lines, we're not talking about all of the same, you know, windows on sides. It's a really different animal, so I'm ready for your motion.
I make a motion that we approve the amendments to Chapter 11 related to residential design standards with the Unified Development Code as presented by staff.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion also carries unanimously. Public hearing number 10.
Public hearing 10. This is a second public hearing on changes to our sign ordinance. It would eliminate the requirement for the county to issue a sign decal or sticker, and also eliminate the requirement for the applicant to affix that sticker to their sign. The sticker concept is an outdated enforcement tactic from many years ago. It both, it's unsightly for some of our modern signs, it's more for an age when the county was issuing permits for pole signs. Getting rid of the sticker requirement also allows us to digitally interact with our customers. Our new software is planned to go live next month, and we will no longer have to have customers come into the office just to pick up a sticker. First public hearing was held by the Board of Commissioners in February, and you could adopt this tonight following the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
A motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Is there anyone who's here to speak in favor of these changes? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to these changers, changes? I'm seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
A motion, a second, please vote. And we are now closed. Is there any discussion amongst the board on this item? I'm ready for a motion, if someone would like to offer one.
I make a motion that we approve the amendments to the Forsyth County Sign Ordinance, Forsyth County Ordinance 74 as detailed by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. No more stickers. At this time, Karen is going to remind us of the public comment rules for speaking.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We're now at the second public comment portion of tonight's meeting. If anyone wishes to address the board during this time, please come forward. We have no forms that have been turned in.
My name's Chester Kramarski. Lived in this county for a long time. I'm really up here to kind of help you out. You've got a problem with your audio system this evening. And as you well know, you know, I come to these meetings rather often for many, many years, and I usually sit kind of in the same spot, and I'm really, really testing your system at this, at this moment, because I'm really heavy into electrical, electronic engineering systems. So I think, Karen, what you got, I think the rear speakers are out, because I've noticed that you're adjusting your mic input, so you, on any audio system, you've got a mic gain going in, and then you're going to have volume output. But it appears that your rear speakers are out, so, but you're going to have to get people in here, so just trying to be helpful.
Thank you, Chester. Yeah, I noticed that we're starting to get a little feedback on the mics now from cranking it up.
Chester to the rescue.
Yeah.
Chester, you apply for jobs online. They'll have the openings online.
Sound engineer. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
I'm sorry, I was sitting in the back, so I may not have heard, but I was curious as to why item number six on the agenda was postponed, the sketch plat review for Capstone.
So this is public comment, so we don't know, I will address that with you, but we don't normally do a back and forth during public comments.
I was just...
It's out of form, because there's been no contact from, from the applicant, and there is a concern, there are significant concerns regarding a traffic study being required. We can discuss that offline. I'll get you one of my cards, or if you want to...
Okay, well, we just talked a couple of days ago. We weren't aware of that. We came here to present, so we, we didn't know it had been postponed, so.
Okay.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there anybody else who's here for comment? We will, and then move on to our old business. Ken, if you can brief us on our one and only old business item, please? Is it one and only correct? Yes.
Madam Chair, board members, I will, this is a matter that had come to the Board of Commissioners some time ago at a work session. It pertained to a request by the Hampton Water Reclamation Facility for the Board of Commissioners to enter into a renewed trust indenture with respect to Hampton. By way of background and simple presentation only, we are already the trustee for this plant, but apparently, as in association with their request for a, what it will effectively be a 365-day discharge into the state waters of Georgia, EPD has requested that we enter into a renewed trust indenture. And for a variety of reasons, and I believe in your agenda book, there should be a resolution under this tab for a variety of reasons, the Board of Commissioners, and candidly, in some respect, with respect to the recommendation of your staff, have determined that we do not believe there is a benefit to the county entering into this renewed trust indenture at this time. So therefore, the direction of the board was to decline, to enter into the trust, the renewed trust indenture, and we actually had this, this was approved and put on the last consent agenda, and then the Representatives of Hampton actually asked it to be taken off the consent agenda, which...
Representatives of Hampton Sewer.
Yes, ma'am, of Hampton, yeah, not HOA, but Hampton, a wastewater facility, asked it to come off the consent agenda, which you did, I thought in a sense of goodwill. And I will speak for myself and say, I've not heard anything from them since.
The only people I've heard anything from at all was the HOA, and they were not, who I talked to, that is on the HOA board, was not in favor. They supported our decision. They were not in favor of the possibility of them adding hundreds of thousands of more gallons with the problems they're having right now, and they did not like the idea of a cross-basin transfer because of the environment.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this item? Ready for a motion, if someone would like to offer one.
I'll make a motion that we, and Ken, tell me if I'm saying it right, that we approve...
It should be, Commissioner, just to approve the resolution declining to become the, declining to issue a renewed trust indenture.
Some move.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you.
And that motion carries unanimously. All right, new business number one. Mr. Gerard, is your name on it?
I might be able to, let me start off on this one.
Okay, we'll let Tom, if Ken's name on it, but we'll let...
Board consideration of initiating a county, a county-initiated conditional use permit for two principal dwellings on properties zoned R1R. The property in question is at 8999 Woodsong Trail, and I do have an image of it there on the screen. This would be initiating the county application, is not approving it tonight. We will come back and schedule it for the first available public hearing if this vote is successful.
Thank you. And do you estimate when that, when that will cycle back around to us? Would that be next month?
First of next month, first meeting of next month.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Dennis, I believe this is in your district.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we initiate, county initiate the cup for two principal dwellings on properties zoned R1R as briefed by council and shown on the screen.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously, and we will see this back before us in about a month. All right, pub, new business number two.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and take the lead in introducing this.
Thank you.
Just summarizing it, and then if the board has any more specific questions, Angela Johnson's here from our grant staff to help out with more details.
Thank you.
As briefly, briefly as I can put this, but to help with a little understanding of it, this application involves the Healthiest Cities and Counties Challenge Grant for an award of up to $100,000, so it's a competitive grant to the foundation. What the project being submitted to meet the goals of this grant is for, if you will, a data warehouse technology project, and we found this will work well in support of what the mental health and criminal justice task force initiatives are related to the collaboration grant and the ARSET grant at the jail. As such, from staff, Brandon Kenny, our CIO, would take the lead with his staff in making the implementation of this work, and also briefly put, this relates to helping people with... And also briefly put, this relates to helping people with behavioral health disorders that get involved with the criminal justice system and part of that diversion initiative. So we found this application, if awarded, would help us with our data needs in serving those programs.
And this, this grant is a joint, is it a joint effort between Aetna and NACO? Is that who this is?
Well, CVS has bought out it. It's a foundation, it's a subsidiary, I think, under CVS, whatever way I understand it.
Okay.
And promote, I'm sorry, and, I'm sorry, in partnership, yes, I'm sorry, yes, with NACO.
In partnership with NACO.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I thought so.
I actually got, saw the grant. It came to me and some of the NACO stuff on the health committee that I'm on and they raised it on the com, in one of the teleconference things that we do bi-monthly about it being available. And I sent it to Angela and said, can we do this? And where, and Angela worked on trying to figure out where it best fit and it really fit well with our mental health and what we're doing. And just so y'all will know, I've got to brag on staff so much, Angela and Sandra and everybody else that was involved, we just had this week a two-day mental health stakeholder, I don't know what we call it, workshop. And they did, I mean, we were there for eight hours or longer on Tuesday and then again half a day on Wednesday. And the, the beauty of it was the collaboration. I mean, there were people there from everywhere, nonprofits, the schools, just...
Floyd County.
Yeah, Floyd County came to watch because they're wanting to follow in our footsteps and see what we're, we're doing. And it was just to be in the room with everybody talking about mental health. We had a lot of people from the sheriff's office there and, and fire, just everybody, 911, and talking about how we can handle it better through this grant. And I really believe this grant, and Angela can, can say, but I think it's a game changer. I really believe, and it's not just what it's going to do with the money at our jail, but the fact that all of these nonprofits and people were there and we talked about, we did the SIM model, sequential intercept model, and worked through all the intercepts and the, the nonprofits there that saw the need, the, before zero, we call it negative one, of needing to intercept the likelihood of people before they become in the jail system. You know, children, children that are in subgroups, children in the school system was well representative, things we can do to help it never progress. And just to have all those conversations, it was a wonderful thing. It was tiring, but it was wonderful.
And unlike a lot of the grants that we applied for, there was no match. This is a, this is a pure...
That's correct. There's no match. And in the interest of full disclosure, there would be some ongoing operating costs to sustain the project, but they can be handled within operating budgets and I think IT and AVIDA with the partners. This is another partnership collaboration type program.
So Dave, I see some interesting wording on here I don't know if I've ever seen before. $100,000 in prize money.
Yeah, congratulations, you've won this prize, that'll go to the program.
It's a competitive grant, so I guess if you win, it's a prize. And they're about to launch because of another grant the sheriff's office got to help with this.
Right.
That initial, that it is, that you gave for the, for the rehabilitation in the jail.
Yeah.
The RS, what'd you call it?
RSAT.
RSAT, yeah.
But it is for the...
Do you want Angela to come up?
First time. Angela, you want to come up and tell about it? But it's a real rehabilitation where people on drugs and they can start getting treatment inside the jail.
RSAT stands for Resident, Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Program. So that is what the sheriff's office was awarded as well, along with the mental health grant.
Data is so important too, the data part of it for us, because this grant is at this level. But if we do it right, we can jump to the million or up to $3 million or something on the next grants if we do it right.
So now that you're up here, if you don't mind, I have a question.
Sure.
So this money that we just got on this grant, and of course Ms. Mills, Commissioner Mills mentioned the schools were there, because I guess they're interested in it. Can it be used for preventative training videos for children that are younger in school before they get involved into drugs?
Not this one, not.
Not this one? I would love to see that.
And this one we haven't been awarded. This is approval to apply, the one that we're looking at now. You're talking about RSAT?
No.
It's limited, yeah.
No, right, yeah, right.
No, but that would be, you know, as a board, if, if say CASA and that deals with foster care and, and some of the others that deal with children, if they could come up with an idea, we've got some money in social services that we could put toward that.
We just have to get the school superintendent degree, at what age she'd be willing to or not play it for their students.
Well, their mental health person was at the meeting and Todd Shirley was there to begin with, but they, she's over it all and she act like they were launching a lot of different programs too.
Well, good.
Well, and another thing that, another thing that came up with this, working through this grant, the Aetna Foundation, one of the big buzzwords we keep hearing is health inequity, cultural competency. So the data bias in data, so we're, we're going to have to also look at the data in terms of those kind of issues, which is kind of new.
Everything, which we need to. That's great. Brandon was there and it's going, he's got a, we've got an eight-month window before we have to turn all this in. I mean, this would just be another help in it to keep doing it right. It's going to be a, a big project for Brandon.
Well, we have to do it, it is part of our mental health grant, so this just kind of piggybacks on what we're already going to do.
Yeah, it just helps add a little bit more money to it.
Right. All right. If there's no further questions, I'm ready for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the application or to apply for the Healthiest Cities and Counties Challenge that as presented by our CFO.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion carries unanimously.
Angela, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Angela. And new business number three, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Commissioners, as I shared with you last week, with changing world events coupled with our experience of employees coming to work with the flu, it was, became apparent to us that we needed to revise our employee policy to cover both the flu and emerging viruses such as COVID-19. So earlier this week, after sharing it with you late last week, I approved a policy that we distributed to employees, but I'm asking the board to ratify that. I will tell you, it was timely on our part in working with Chris Crimes and Emergency Management. We literally had an employee due to return from a vacation in a level two country and a level three country, and we needed to have something in place to protect our employees. And so rolled it out earlier this week. The sheriff's office is rolling out their own policy, but they did share this policy with their employees as well.
Can you apprise us of the highlight, the, the key points of this new policy change?
Sure, so a few things is to kind of identify the types of conditions that we're talking about, both in terms of describing what the symptoms are as well as the types of, of infectious or contagious conditions. So it talks about flu, strep throat, TB, meningitis, mono, mumps, measles, rubella and chicken pox. Obviously, what's driven us to this is COVID-19 and the fact that, as we're now seeing, it's, it's popping up around the country and we have to assume that it'll make its way further into this area and we need to have the tools in place. Earlier this year, we had a, a problem with employees coming to work with the flu and infecting their office. And so part of what, I had an emergency directors' meeting last week, I've got a directors' meeting again tomorrow. Part of what I asked directors to do is before we actually have this intermittent and have to deal with it, to start preparing for how we can reduce interaction between customers and employees and even between employees so that we reduce the potential to have any type of a contagious condition spread within our offices and impact our ability to deliver services. So part of this is to recognize what are the symptoms we're looking for, stability to send employees home. It's essentially saying that regardless of whether you get stopped at the airport and have a fever, we're basically saying that if you travel in an area that's been identified by a public health agency, that they will have to sit home for the incubation period that's been identified. Currently, we know that China and South Korea are level three, I think currently, unless it's changed today, that Japan, Italy and Iran are level two. Level two means basically take extra precautions. Level three means that you should not travel to those countries unless you have to. But currently, the, the incubation period is 14 days. That could change, but at this point, what we want to do is not try to make up our own rules, but steer people to the guidance that the CDC is providing nationally. And so I think this helps us in terms of protecting our employees from having employees come to work sick, having the ability to send them home. But it was important that employees know about this as soon as possible because if someone, for example, was planning to go to Japan for the Olympics, they need to have second thoughts because unless that is, is no longer a level two, they may go, but they're not going to be able to return to the office for the 14 days. And that 14-day period may change. Last Wednesday, we actually had a meeting where we had the health department, that's the state health department, representative of, of the school system on behalf of, of what they're doing in terms of health, as well as representatives of Northside, because obviously they're the hospital in our community. And we just realized that we had to be proactive in terms of getting ahead of this before we actually have evidence that this exists within our community. But in the meantime, all the things we're encouraging employees to do, hand washing, trying to get supplies of PRL, which is rapidly disappearing, we have back orders, although fortunately we were able to get some before it, it became short of supply. But the things that protect should COVID-19 arrive in our community also protect you against spreading the flu. And the school system has already seen that flu is reemerging, we're not out of flu season. And so getting people comfortable with the practice of good hygiene not only keeps people from bringing the flu to work, but it, it gets us experiencing the pattern of behavior that we need to, to have in place to prepare for something as significant as, as COVID-19, otherwise known as, as coronavirus.
So in this policy, is there the flexibility to, to change the waiting period so this would be a policy that could be implemented for a different type? I mean, if we're thinking in terms of being able to have a broad policy, so who sets that criteria?
CDC. Yes, thank you. That, so, so what we have, and it's under B, workplace requirements, talks about CDC and specifically identifies level two or level three travel advisory. That allows the CDC, based on world conditions, to identify additional nations or even parts of the United States that, that may be subject to a travel advisory. We talk about the incubation period is identified by a public health organization.
Okay.
So that we're not trying to make this up or come back to you and change the policy if, if there is a, a different type of virus that emerges and, and they say there's a 21, 21-day incubation period, we don't have to revise our policy. What we're trying to do, and Karen has been instrumental in this, is to be able to point our employees to the authorities that will define based on current events and can do that on, you know, literally an hourly basis. If they identify another country, we don't have to go back and identify, I mean, who would have guessed that Italy would be on the list? But it is.
Well, right, that, I mean, that's what I wanted to make sure that what we're adopting is, as a policy is going to be something that's going to actually serve us as things progress or things change or new, new threats come about.
And I actually shared this through ACCG with my counterparts in city and county government throughout the state. And the advantage of doing that is we've given them the opportunity to copy us, but it also means that if someone finds some weakness that they think that they can approve on, the first thing you do is share it with the person you got the idea from. So we have the opportunity that if someone comes up with something that we missed or we could approve on, we're likely to be one of the first ones to hear back. And ACCG acknowledged that, you know, their appreciation that we were sharing this with them.
I have one question, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
So we brought this up a week ago, Tuesday, to get this ball rolling. One thing I didn't hear you say, Mr. Johnson, is after their incubation period, whether that is 14 days or if that changes, do we then require them to go to a clinic and actually get screened before we allow them to come back to work?
Yes, thank you. That's in the policy, they have to go to a health provider. We can't steer them to our clinic, obviously, for people that are part of our health plan.
Right.
That's the no-cost option. But yes, under the return to work, which is the next to last section, it's under Part D, I'll just read it, "As a condition for return to work, the employee will be required to provide certification from a professional healthcare provider stating the contagious symptom or contagious condition that the employee experienced has been cleared and the employee may return to work without risk to other employees. The written statement must be submitted electronically," again, we don't really want them walking in with a piece of paper, even if it says they're okay, "to personnel services which are review and approve the release before the employee may return to work. An employee failing to provide a written return to work authorization prior to reporting to work will be immediately sent home and may be subject to disciplinary action for failure to comply." You know, part of this is, we can tell them to do the right thing, but if they don't, we have to, as an employer, protect our other employees because not only, and I'll just tell you, tomorrow, we expect this to go out to poll workers because we've got a, you know, a critical national event that's going to be occurring multiple times this year. And as I understand it, poll workers like to travel. And so we need to make sure that the poll workers are protected from each other and certainly that the people that come in to vote are protected from an ill poll worker. But we need to protect our employees because our employees will continue to come in contact with the public and part of protecting the public is ensuring that we don't have sick employees in the workplace infecting our customers.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
If CDC has listed a certain area that you shouldn't travel to and an employee chooses to go there under level two or level three, and they come back, that 14-day timeframe after they made that bad decision, are we paying them in the incubation timeframe?
No, they will either be on leave or they will be on approved leave without pay. So they will, they will burn off their leave if they don't have the leave. Any individual who returned this week had leave. But if they don't have leave, they'll be on leave without pay, but it will be approved. So that doesn't go against them, although there's language that someone is a repeat offender, at some point, they're, they may be impacting the ability of their department to provide service. So there's always that issue.
Thank you.
We also recognize that there's ADA and FMLA issues that, that may come to, in the bearing, in terms of how we deal with, with their situation.
Thank you.
One quick question, Eric.
Yes, ma'am.
In that, do we allow for any flexibility, like, I mean, this is changing every day and we're hearing more and more, it's so fluid, that if something comes out from the CDC that is different than this, that we adhere to their, you understand what I'm saying?
Sure.
That there is some kind of fluidness or flexibility that the powers that be that really govern over this, that we adhere to their standards?
Well, and I think, I think the answer is yes, because we, we talk about recognized health organizations, we named the CDC. Now, if, if they were to create some level other than level one, two and three, then obviously that, that changes things and we'd have to react. But we're going to be monitoring this, so if something changes that we couldn't anticipate, my suggestion is we use the same process, that I would make a change, we'd let employees know about it immediately and I'd bring it back as quickly as possible for board ratification.
But don't you think we need something in case, since it is, I mean, Ken, can you come up with something that would offer that ability?
I think, I think the flexibility's in the policy. We worked on the policy with HR staff. I think it's got sufficient flexibility that really the, the organized health organizations are, are in fact presenting a lot of the things and we're just reacting to that in this policy.
Exactly. Okay, good.
All right. Any further questions? I'm ready for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the changes to Policy Nine, attendance and leave revision of the March 2nd, 2020. Sections 15A through E has been presented to us on the three-page document.
Second.
I'm sorry, something else?
Just one clarification, because we're putting Section 15 in it, it requires us to renumber the sections that you'll see at the end of the material we provided you.
All right, so basically what's in our three-page document is what we're approving?
Yes, sir.
And approving, renumeration as required.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have, I believe we had a second from Commissioner Cooper. Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting that done so timely, guys. Thank you.
You have, I'm sorry?
I have a point of order real very quickly. Madam Chair, would you and the board be willing to make a motion for reconsideration with respect to old business number one pertaining to Hampton? I need to, I need to walk you through that again.
We have a motion, a second for reconsideration, please vote.
Madam Chair, Board members, thank you for that. I have passed out at your station the resolution. That resolution was actually not in your backup and I think I know why. I think the reason was because at the work session, when you took the action, you directed the resolution be prepared and then have it on the consent agenda, I prepared it, but then, of course, we postponed it and I... I prepared it, but then, of course, we postponed it, and I don't think the resolution traveled with it. I want to make sure when you make this vote, you're actually staring at the resolution that is in front of you. So I would ask again, I think Commissioner Mills made the, the motion, the motion to approve the resolution declining to enter into a renewed trust indenture is still in order. I just want to make sure the record reflects you've got the actual resolution you're approving in front of you.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. And I, councillor, I understand we do have a need for a, I heard it described as brief executive session.
It will be, it will be brief, yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a motion to recess the regular meeting and public hearings and enter into executive session for the discussion of litigation, land acquisition and/or personnel?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. And we are in recess at 6:54 PM. All right, we are rolling. Is there a motion to reconvene the regular meeting and public hearings?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Will call us back in at 7:39. Is there, there is no further business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote again. And we are out at 7:39. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait.
Cooper and Levitt, I mean, we've got a majority, but would you guys abstain or, Cooper, you want to, would you want to adjourn?
Molly, right to the green. You can't listen to Todd.
There you go. Still 7:39.